All right, I'm gonna call to order the August 1st, 2019 meeting of the Towne Sherburne Select Board. I'm gonna ask the town administrator to read the agenda.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. First is a call to order, and then a reading of the agenda, and amend or approve the agenda, and period of public comment. And in consideration of consent agenda with a payroll warrant and minutes from July 11th. And then next meeting date is set for August 15th. And then a discussion about meeting dates starting in September for the first and third Thursdays, or the second and fourth Thursdays. Then borrowing library and capital items and reissuance 2018 bond anticipation note, signing of useful life statement for capital items, vote to borrow $45,000 for Woodhaven apartment renovations from their authorized but unissued portion of the 2012 annual town meeting approval. And review in consideration of Sherburne Litter Up Initiative submitted by Kim Chester. Then Forest Appreciation Day, Saturday, September 14th, 2019, and Kelly McClintock Conservation Commission will be here. Then consideration of appointments, there's an attached sheet of appointments. And then routine business, Finance Director report, Town Administrator report, update on sustainability coordinator, then selectmen reports. And then an executive session, if needed, called under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and the chair so declares library.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Great. All right, so we had no public comments sign up, so moved to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved.
I was just gonna add, we will need the executive session to...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? All right, so let's talk about the meeting dates. We have 8:15 is set, and we have an agenda being accumulated for that. But I wanted to set meetings for the entire fall schedule. We first looked at the first and third Thursdays, but that was a conflict for Dover Sherburne Cable Television, because Dover's already set their meetings for first and third Thursdays. So then we looked at the dates for the second and fourth, which I think would work, other than we'd wanna move the last November and the last December meetings around the holidays. I just think, I think it's important that we have Rick here to record our meetings. So I'll take, anybody else have commented on that? The other part is, I guess, two other things to consider. 8:15 is our next meeting. We wouldn't have another meeting until 9:12, but we could have a meeting if there's enough business that we need to discuss. We could have a meeting on August 29th if we needed to, which would be two weeks in between those.
Well, if I could, every year, this town tries to submit information to Department of Revenue on setting the tax rate early in the year. And every year that I've been on the board, there's been a request for a meeting somewhere around Labor Day, either a few days before or a few days afterwards, so that they can get a jump on getting the information to Department of Revenue. They can't do that unless we sign off on some things that they have.
From the assessors, because Wendy has requested specifically that November 12th meeting. Wendy from the Board of Assessors, or from the Assessors' Office.
Wow.
Is that December 12th? No, November, September 12th, I'm sorry, September.
September 12th.
Yeah. She wanted, she said that week. But then also Heidi has asked that we meet, we need to meet the week of September 5th as well, because she needs us to sign off on some borrowing. That's a specific window. So I think, what I'm proposing is that we do those second and fourth, just to accommodate, so the citizens can see it on cable television, and Rick can be here to do it. But we also have maybe a short 10-minute meeting on the 5th to approve what Heidi needs.
So the 5th is, it's a Thursday. Is that Labor Day, is that before Labor Day?
It's after, right. Labor Day's September 12th.
Monday the 2nd.
Monday the 2nd, yep.
Just getting my calendar out. So a quick meeting on the 5th, and a regular meeting on the 12th.
Right.
Yeah, proposing.
Right. And then, you couldn't do that on August 29th, could you, by chance?
No.
It's too soon?
Yeah.
It's gotta be the month.
The timing has to be, so that was given the window of the 3rd to the 6th.
Okay.
You could do a morning if it's morning time.
For me, it works better in the evenings, but I don't know whether we're still doing it.
Oh, if it's not a major issue, you just, you may have quarrel, you may have conflict.
Right. You would need three of us to...
I need a majority.
I generally recommend meetings so the public can participate.
Exactly.
The public has a right to participate, even though it may not seem like an interest of, an issue that would draw much interest. It's still a democracy. People have a right to show up, and a lot of people work.
Particularly if we can't televise it. I think having the evening session makes more sense.
So maybe, here's an idea for the, I think we do the 5th, we do a short meeting, the 12th, then we move to the second and fourth. But then, maybe for December, like from the 11/28, 12/12, and 12/26, maybe we unfortunately have to be the same weeks as Dover that time, and do December 5th and December 19th.
One thing I was gonna say, just not answering your question, I would suggest towards the November timeframe, because I mentioned this in our first meeting that I attended, was that I wanna have us be involved in setting the guidance for fiscal year, the next fiscal year. So I wanna have a joint meeting with advisors somewhere in here.
I think we could...
Where we're agreeing on the guidance for, you know, so we're involved in the decision of what the guidance the budget maker should be. So somewhere in that, they usually do that in the early to mid-November.
Right, I think we can put that into one of our regular meetings. But I think for the late, instead of, if we do the second and fourth, instead of 11/28, 12/12, and 12/26, we do 12/5 and 12/19.
About 11/21, no?
No, we wouldn't need that, because we do 11/14, and then we go to 12/5.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're far more likely to get people here in person on the 19th and the 26th.
Right, exactly. I mean, the day before Thanksgiving's not gonna be a day that you...
Right.
Or December 26th, nobody's gonna, so I think December 5th and December 19th make sense. Even though it's the same meeting dates as Dover, we'll just have to make it work.
Only one in November, and then there's two early ones in December.
Right. We would have, yeah, November 14th would be our only November meeting.
Okay.
But guidance usually is in October. We would probably have a meeting on...
Probably that would, but early November, they debated.
Like the 24th, maybe we could plan on doing the 24th with advisors.
Even at the 14th, if they're, if their first meeting, they're usually debating.
Right.
After the weather.
So I'll make a motion that we have our meetings August 15th, then the...
September 15th.
No, August, starting August 15th.
Oh, sorry, that's right.
November 5th, I mean, September 5th, for a short meeting with the treasurer.
Yep.
September 12th, September 26th, 10:10, 10:24, 11:14, 12:5, and 12:19.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Makes sense.
Thank you. All right. So now we have our schedule amended. Later in the fall, we'll make our schedule for the whole spring, so then we have it on the calendar every week. All right, so I think the next item is borrowing library and capital items and reissuance of 2018 bond anticipation note.
Can I just, Heidi?
Thank you.
I think we'll need a copy of these for last evening, and I think that had a poll that was a sample.
We have it.
Yeah, we have it.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Heidi Doyle, Town Treasurer. And I'm here for actually five items tonight. Fairly routine, but they will need some separate votes. So what we're going through right now is, we have two borrowing anticipation notes coming up, so I'd like to just vote them both tonight, although they will be done, one will be done at a later time point. I just was trying to save the evening time to get both voted on tonight. First one is for the library. The amount is for $2,046,752. That's gonna be a one-year, short-term borrowing anticipation note. And this number's come up from, Jeff has worked with the library and what they need to finish the project right now. It's within the amount that's been authorized by the town. We still have $6.4 million authorized on issue. And I'm looking for a motion to vote this number, and to allow me to proceed with the borrowing for the library.
Do you wanna do one at a time, or should we run for a little? So why don't we do one at a time?
I think one at a time, so I won't get confused.
Very good.
I actually thought we'd begin this one before. I know we did the GAN.
We had it split out, and you only took one vote.
We only did one vote, but we discussed this number.
We just got those discussed.
Right.
So I'll take a motion to approve the borrowing of $2,046,752.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just under discussion, is it possible to have a quick update on the construction at the library, just for the information to the public?
We probably wanna do it in executive session, I think. I mean, the main updates for public consumption are the fact that they're doing a lot of the site work. You've seen their, the secondary is in for the transformer, they're working on the transformer and the generator rotation, a lot of the site work. But most of the work regarding the masonry and exterior probably will be in executive session, I think.
Yeah, I saw a tank that went in.
Yes, they installed a fire suppression water tank, because the town doesn't have a hydrant system, but they'll have, the water will sprint, because you're required to have an in-ground storage tank, which if you lose electricity, you still have the fire pump that can pump from that tank. So they installed, I think it's $25,000 gallons that way, I guess $25,000 gallons of that. It's now been properly installed, and they're just finishing it up.
And it's installed now on rocks, not the bed of sand that was initially installed, right?
It's on a peystone. It's actually installed on a pad. That's actually a giant light reserve, so it doesn't have water, and it'll float if we don't have it strapped. It's strapped to a concrete pad, but it's fiberglass, so it can, the shape can change. That's why the peystone is essential, and you put it in a balanced way, so the shape of the pad doesn't change. So yes, it's installed down. It's been tested and accepted also.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
So the next item is for the capital items that have been approved at the April 2019 all-town meeting. Now, they are listed below. It's a fire breathing apparatus, CMMD compressor, CMMD materials processing equipment, CMMD track, two CMMD pickups with fire equipment. This has money for town buildings and for Pine Hill School renovation floors, for a total of $707,695. So I'm just asking for a vote to do that. This again is gonna be a one-year bond anticipation note.
All motion? So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
My discussion is, you may, I mean, timing of the note, half the note are not quite out of the town buildings. You may wanna talk with Sean in terms of timing. That probably won't start, you know, he'll have to get the design, and then, I'm not sure what his view of the schedule is.
Well, that's why we're doing a bond anticipation note, so then, assuming this is all happening in the next year, since it's on the end of the meeting.
Well, town building, yeah, it is, but town building sometimes can run over. You start the project, but sometimes it does extend into the second year of work.
And I think that's why you do it out of one year, so then you see the exact amount once it comes a year from now, if she leads to a long-term bond.
So, I'm just saying, that's the one item that probably won't have expenditures right away.
David, you have any input on that, this town building? It just seems to make sense rather than do a separate borrowing, even if he says, I have $100,000 to do it, issue its cost, and go through the whole process again.
Yeah.
For one year.
It's kinda like we did with the fire truck last year.
Right. You never know when they need the deposit, and when things are coming in.
Right, so you have it there. All right, all those in favor?
Number three is per bond council. On these capital items, we need a useful life statement. And I have talked with Chief Kinney for the fire department equipment, and Sean for the CMMD equipment. And the recommendation is for 10 years for each of the items. Sean felt some might be over 10 years, but 10 years seems to be a comfortable number that they felt this would be useful for. It's within the Department of Local Services. They have a chart of how many years you're allowed to borrow in apartment equipment. We can easily go up to 10 years on a useful life. So that's my recommendation. I have one sheet that will have to be voted on, signed. It's witnessed by the Town Clerk's Office, and the clerk of the Select Board would be the one signing this.
So to make sure the motion was correct, can I...
Go ahead, go ahead and make the motion.
Can I move to, to adopt the vote of the Select Board that's contained within our pack?
Sign the useful life statement on the equipment as presented?
Yes.
Well, actually, I wanna discuss it, if we can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I don't, I don't know what you're including in that, but I don't believe the town buildings or Pine Hill floors are ten-year life assets.
Neither, neither one is a life, because it's not a capital equipment. The only useful life items we're voting for are...
On this page, Jeff, did you see this?
On this one page.
Page in the back.
Oh, okay, hang on.
I have another sheet.
No, no, hang on.
Under number 3.
So we don't vote on the floors for that, but actually, you can go up to 30 years on the other ones.
Yep. That's actually the question I have. Which of these maximum useful lives could be extended beyond 10 years?
Sean felt some of his could be 10 to 15 years. I think it was on the tractor.
The tractor, I assume, would be one, right?
Right, that's what, yeah, the tractor was one of them. It's a question of whether some of the pickup trucks last longer or not. You know, it's debatable, but you know, I've heard horror stories about if you buy police vehicles, and you've bonded them for 10 years, and they're only using five years, you don't have the item anymore. So 10 years seem to be comfortable.
Great.
John Frayn.
I think we're, I'm more comfortable doing the 10 years. I think that probably works for all of them. It's the way we're hard on our equipment here.
Well, that would concern a good place. And the scuba equipment might last longer, but...
Right. Sometimes we use a useful life, but we actually get more life out of them.
I wonder how much interest goes up, though, if you extended it as well?
Any interest?
Yeah.
How much it would go up?
How much more would we pay in interest?
And probably a higher rate, too.
It may be, but this is gonna be packaged within that whole, going on for a total of $2.7 million, so...
Doesn't really have a normal...
And to say, to say the fire equipment at $73,000 piece of equipment, you wanna go for 15 years, that's not gonna be a much interest difference.
Right. The impact's gonna be minimal, even for the $111,000 on the trucks.
Right.
So my one question, it's be signed by the clerk of the Select Board, so just a vote to authorize the clerk to sign this? It's kinda obvious how it would sign that.
Because it says, vote to accept and sign the useful life.
Yeah.
Who, you know, I actually asked, who is the clerk or something?
Eric.
That's why.
Every now and then he has to sign something. That's his job.
I just wanted to be informed, that's all.
Otherwise, I just would've kept the motion.
Why does the vote say that it's unanimously passed? I mean, obviously, we need a forum, but why does it require unanimous, it doesn't require unanimous vote?
It doesn't adjust the standard form.
This is what bond council sent me?
I mean, I'm guessing it'll be unanimous, but I don't think it requires unanimous vote.
Right, I'm not sure the rationale.
Only the majority's necessary.
Yeah.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
It is unanimous.
It is unanimous.
I'm just gonna pass this to Eric.
Until we get actually signed it.
No, Eric can actually sign it, not me.
I think the fine print says that Eric's gonna be personally liable for performance and his payback.
He's gotta drive the tractor out.
So, number four on this is the reissuance of the 1.805-364 existing ban. That is up on September 12th. So if anyone needs a list of the equipment, I can get you a list of what the prior equipment was. This is what we've already approved and have as a bond anticipation note. I'm just asking to renew for another year. My role right now is to assemble this, and usually you go for a long-term bond, once you reach around the $4 million to make it worth the issuance cost. And we're getting close, so next year's probably gonna be the time.
So what are the rates on this versus like if you went the long term? So you wanna wait to $4 million, it just makes sense to get to $4 million, you think?
Because to go for 1.8 now, we're not gonna get much difference. They're actually fairly close right now, depending on what you're doing. And it's been, when I've seen other towns, you can't really pick a way to say why one town got a better rate than another town. Some have had better ratings, some haven't, some are made on the size. It's kind of, I can't give you a crystal ball and tell you the rate's gonna be better. They've been in the low twos right now for us.
It just must have rank reduction from the feds.
From the feds, right. And I haven't heard anything from the banks to hear what the rates would be.
I heard a key part of the decision was the fact that we were about to go out to bond.
They're waiting for us.
All right, do I have a motion to reissue?
Not the subject of political affairs.
Do I have a motion to reissue the 2018 bond anticipation note of $1,805,364?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Now, item number five, the last one. Just a little history, that Keller Housing is looking for an additional $45,000. They were, had ATM and all-town meeting vote in 2012 that issued $500,000 for the renovations. And what they do is, apartments become available, they will renovate some, and they'll borrow more money to do the renovations as they come up. There is an apartment that they would like to renovate, and they think there might be another one coming up. So the history is, they've used up $280,000 before, and the last band, bond, rather, we put in another $100,000 has been used up over this time. So they have $120,000 authorized but unissued remaining. So they're looking to get another $45,000 out of that right now to help with the apartment renovations that they expect to start in the next month, which would leave them with $75,000 available as unissued. So I would need a motion to go out and add this $45,000 that they're looking for into this existing issue.
So moved.
Second. I just want to also note, so you know, this is funded by the rental fees.
Plus, they have very short turnaround time, when you can talk to them, so when they have, you know, a partner available, so the ski that you get it done at that time is a little easier.
And they're doing a great job.
Yeah.
And they're doing it very cost-effectively, too.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Can I ask a quick question? Do we specify that it's from the unissued amount of the authorization from the 2012 annual town meeting vote?
I thought it wouldn't hurt.
Yes, that's a good idea.
The motions to vote to authorize borrowing of $45,000 for Woodhaven apartment renovations from unissued amount of 2012 annual town.
Yeah, I think we should include that. So who made the motion?
Paul, are you comfortable?
Yeah, I just so moved what she said. I think she said that. That's why I said so.
Your memory's right out of your mind.
All those in favor?
Everyone had the table, so I think it's important.
Great. Thank you, Heidi.
Thanks, Heidi.
Very clear.
All right, next on our agenda is the Litter Up Initiative. Is Kim coming?
No.
Okay.
No, she's not.
All right, so, Kim Chester had sent us a charter for the Litter Up Initiative, which is in our packet. I don't know how much, I mean, what do we wanna, do you wanna discuss it? Do I mean, what do we wanna talk about here?
So if I could, I, yeah, I'd then, I also wanna ask for this agenda on this meeting. The, I'd say a couple of things. First, this is an initiative from a group of volunteers led by Kim Chester. And volunteers are what makes this town work. And for those who are new in town and happen to be watching this meeting, the entire Board of Selectmen is unpaid volunteers, and the Conservation Commission is unpaid volunteers. Most of the boards and committees in the town are unpaid volunteers. They are what makes this town run. Other cities and towns actually pay people to be on boards and committees. So the way this town is organized, we do have paid staff, the Town Administrator, the Assistant Town Administrator, the Finance Director, we do have paid staff. But by and large, it's volunteers who drive the work, much of the work that gets done. So here's a group, and they have this vision that they're going to make significant improvements on litter cleanup in the town. And they wanna do it in the form of their own committee. And I understand that, I understand the points made by the Town Administrator that we have too many committees, and maybe we should fold this into another already existing committee. But my feeling is, if you have a group that comes forward, wants to do something, wants to do it as a committee, why don't we welcome that and accept it, and let them do their thing with our supervision, rather than making them part of the recycling, an existing committee, the Recycling Committee, which is the recommendation from the Town Administrator. Again, I understand the recommendation, but I think we should tap the energy. When, when she was here, she was full of energy. She was very enthusiastic, very much cared. And I think we should tap that.
We have an energy committee, too.
Paul, I don't see how the energy would be changed if it's under the per se of the Recycling Committee. I think she's very passionate about this issue, and I think, I think David makes a very good point, that we have a number of committees that we can't fill spots for. And to be able to, it kind of falls into the, I think the Recycling Committee, this actually makes sense to be a part of that.
Well, picking up litter, having done that around the perimeter of my property for a long time, a lot of the stuff is not recyclable.
Well...
It's just trash. And the Recycling Committee has a function at the transfer station, and in terms of promoting recycling. I just feel that a voluntary effort would then get diluted and maybe even lost. So I, I don't agree. I think, I think we should let them do their thing.
Yeah, what I wanted to ask is, if there's, if it has to be a committee, because I sort of, I'm sort of in between the two of you, I guess is how I say it, is I, I agree with Paul, that we don't wanna tamp down any enthusiasm that we see, but a committee, all of a sudden, you're gonna need, you know, open meeting laws and minutes and, you know, regular meetings and all that kind of thing. It's really an action group, not a committee to me. It's people that wanna get out and be, not meeting this committee, they wanna be walking the roads and causing other people, you know, educating people in the town about the issue, and maybe getting volunteers, you know. Maybe you'll have, I know we have a cleanup day in the spring usually, but they could do it quarterly or something.
I think that's where it'll stem from, unless she wanted to expand on that.
So my concern is, right now, it seems, she says in here, I will recruit five to seven representatives. Right now, it's primarily her enthusiasm. So I worry that launching a committee based on one person's initiative seems like a step, it could go to that step, but is there a way, what am I... It could go to that step, but is there a way, what I'm asking, is there a structure where they could be an advisory team to the Town Administrator or something that has a function, captures source enthusiasm, but isn't, I hate the word committee, I guess. Maybe, maybe it's, you know, semantics a little bit, but...
Here's a suggestion. Instead of Art making this decision and imposing it on her, why don't we postpone this until she can be here and have this dialogue with her?
I agree, I think, I would, I didn't know she wasn't gonna be here tonight because I wanna hear what Kim's...
I'm sorry, I let you go first, 'cause that's exactly what I was gonna say. In terms of the enthusiasm, I'm not sure that they want to set up and establish committee. We do, I wanna have a sunshine provision, sunset provision. But I don't think they wanna worry about OML postings and minutes and things. So in some ways, they have energy to engage in the activities, not to set up a formal standing committee. So I share your view, let's give her input on it.
Her plan, from when we discussed it with her and even in what she wrote, is I think to recruit a lot of students to help her with this. And I don't think they're gonna sit on a formal committee. I think it's more, she's looking for volunteers to come and help her with the litter problem, not sit on a committee.
Well, I think Jeff correctly identified my concern, which is, let's not dampen the enthusiasm.
I don't think anybody's trying to do that.
There was a spark, a fire that was burning brightly.
Absolutely.
And if we come along and say, "Nah, not, you can't do this, you can't do that," and she gave up, then we lose that whole thing. But if we have her here, we explain, we have a dialogue, figure out what she feels she needs and tell her what the consequences are, then maybe we can find common ground. Treats her with more respect than just...
I don't wanna make this decision without her input, I agree.
Can I just throw something out there?
Yeah.
Instead of doing with the, you know, assigning it to the recycling program, we could keep it in our office, just basically the same we did, we did the playground. Was that, didn't have a playground committee, it was an outside group of excited people and we did whatever we could in the office. They would come to us whenever they needed something. And we would support them by directing them to a certain department head or line funds to help them out. So that might be somewhere in between having their own committee and not having any committee. And in that structure, they would not, they would just be an advisory, an advisory group. So when they wanted something brought to the select, they would come into our office and advise us that they wanna talk about X, Y, Z. And we'd put it on the agenda, assist them in whatever way we can.
And going to talking with her, really, she wants to do more than just walk around the streets and pick up trash.
Oh, absolutely.
She wants to get enforcement underway. She wants to get more attention paid by all kinds of town departments. And so...
And education of the public too.
And education. So I think in part, she felt she needed some authority, some cachet, so she could go, let's say, as a police chief and say, "Could you undertake enforcement of bylaws with regard to this particular location or this particular kind of trash that we see coming from, let's say, a particular store?" I think she mentioned in her...
Or a certain location, she has a certain location where she sees the same litter every day.
Every day, and she sees the same guy dropping the same litter every day. So she wanted to have some, some status.
Absolutely.
That would, she'd be more than just...
Why don't you reach out to her, Diane, and say, "When she can come to one of our next meetings, we're gonna brief talk with her and see if this works for her." I think, I think it makes more sense to have the discussion with Kim, because this came from her, and make sure we're doing, not dampening her enthusiasm. Oh, Kelly, did you have a comment? I'm sorry.
I did, but it's moot. We're gonna wait until Kim comes here.
Okay.
That's the best solution.
Okay, perfect. Alright, so speaking of Kelly, I think we can move on to the fourth appreciation day.
So here's when we get to see the Forest for the Trees, right?
After fashion, do you guys have this in your...
Yes, we do, we have it here.
Thank you.
Thank you, I won't take long, just wanna explain this day and make two public appreciation comments. We got our first Forest Doored Chip grant five years ago. And every year since then, that was to create a Forest Doored Chip plan. Every year since then, we've got an implementation grant. So Little Sherborne has more consecutive years of grants from this program than any other town in the state. And they're most total funds. We would like to think we have done some really good work with this and DCR seems to be pretty proud of it. Every year they have this, we're calling it Forest Appreciation Day. They call it a conference, which we thought was an inappropriate term. It started out for forest professionals. And forest professionals come in from around the state to learn something. They get continuing education credits. But increasingly, they have tried to make this family-friendly. Hence the turtle and the bee houses and the flyer. This event is free, free, if you register, it's a free lunch. It's a great opportunity, I think, for Sherborne to show some good things Sherborne's been doing to a larger audience. And we're pretty proud of this and hope everybody will be able to come. Thank you, George, for agreeing to introduce it.
Absolutely.
The two thank yous aside from, to you first, to the Select Board and Advisory, because these grants are only for improvements, substantial improvements, not for basic maintenance. We underfunded basic maintenance for a long time. And three years ago, with very little objection, certainly some questions, you approved a 150% increase to our basic land management budget. Total dollar is not big, but it's an extraordinary increase. That allowed us not to fall into the trap of making improvements while maintenance lapsed. And it covers all the reservations, just not Barber. So that has made a colossal difference. The second thank you, and Paul, you said all this much better than I could, is to our volunteers. You've known this for a long time, I've only been learning about it for the past five years or so. But the volunteer culture in this town is extraordinary. Virtually the entire amount of the required local match for these grants has been in the form of hundreds of volunteer hours. So very little money, lots of volunteerism, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I add one thing to that? 'Cause I'm still, my other hat is I'm chaired by a Boy Scout committee in town. So they do a lot of work on trails. We have Eagle projects where we build bridges and...
Oh, yes.
We have theos for daily trails like that. So one thing you might think, if you need help this day, the troop would be willing, if you needed people to help park cars or, you know, whatever you need. Because they worked, volunteered George Fisk a lot of time at the Harvest Fair last year. So the troop helped in the kitchen, they helped with parking, so...
Yeah, they kept down there, they were security basically.
Yes, they were, yes. So, you know, you can just reach out to me if you want, if you wanna, need some bonds that day.
Have your card.
Yeah, well, my card is my professional card. The Boy Scouts is my not day job, it's my night job.
There's a link on the website.
We have, you can get his email, I can get to his email.
Through the Select Board.
But they've done a lot of work, and Paul knows this, because Paul attends every Eagle ceremony we have, so he knows the trail work, but they've done a lot of trail work. We work with Forest and Trails and Conservation, the people on that.
Yeah, I'm on the Forest and Trail Board. And indeed, the Eagle Scout's been terrific.
So they would help on your volunteer day.
Kelly, a couple of quick questions. First of all, we'll attach to our meeting agenda, the agenda for the Town Forest event. It's really interesting, the events are gonna be at Barber and in the Town Forest.
At the start of the community center.
At the start of the community center.
For parking reasons, we're urging people to come to the community center, but there will be a shovel.
Right. It's terrific. A quick question on Barber. It's somebody who walks there regularly with my Airedale companion. It's gotten difficult to walk because of the mowing. You've talked about this before. I'm assuming before this event, it'll be, the sides of the open fields will be mowed down some?
About a year ago, a new family moved into Curran Street, partly because of Barber. The guy has a mower, a tractor, and as of a week ago, he has volunteered to mow the trails for free. And before the event, do the entire meadow at the entrance. So it's gonna be pristine.
Terrific, yeah, 'cause it's, I mean, it's gotten fairly rough.
It's better as of today.
Oh, terrific, I didn't make it there this afternoon. And a second question, I've always wondered, in Eastern Mass, I bet that the town of Sherborne has about as high a percentage of the town acreage, town land mass, in-town forest as anybody. Is there a listing of that? Do you know what percentage of the total town is in-town forest in Sherborne?
If you combine Town Forest and Conservation Land.
Right.
The open space, the new open space recreation plan would have these numbers. I don't know exactly, it's something on the order of 30%.
Yeah, it's gotta be, it's gotta be very high for Eastern Mass.
More than other towns in Eastern Mass, I don't know, I would certainly suspect so.
Right.
Percentage-wise, we're a small town.
So I have a question. In connection with my work at the State House, is Commissioner Roy coming?
No.
Is Karen Palito coming?
No. It's a DCR-driven function. Jennifer Fish, who is in charge of this part of DCR, is going to be making some presentations, but not Roy or, I don't believe that level of people has ever come to one of these events. Looking at past agendas.
What do you expect it to turn out to be?
I hate to give a number, DCR says they really want 100 registered people. They've had more in the past, but that was when they piggybacked on another event. For instance, last year, they would've done this at the time of the Grange Fair. So I'll be very happy if there's 100 registered people.
Thank you, Kelly, thank you for putting this together. It's a great, great event for Sherborne.
And last question, Kelly, is this you holding the turtle? Is this you?
No.
Those are your hands?
I'm going to say it is a spotted turtle.
Can you just put your hands up like that? I think it is.
Spotted turtle's very rare.
Thank you very much, Kelly. The next item on our agenda is a consideration of appointments. We have a list in our packet under the six tab. The appointments are for the Elder Housing Committee, David Curtis, for a term to expire 6/15/22. Council on Aging, Christine Winterfeld, for a term to expire 6/15/22. Jerry Hahn for a term to expire 6/15/22. And Descom, Pete Hoglin, for a term to expire 6/15/22. Disability Advisory Committee, Charity, sorry, Brashowski, for a term to expire 6/15/22. Recycling Committee, Diane Hanson, for a term to expire 6/15/22. And David Munoz for a term to expire 6/15/22. Then we have a list of town election workers, but I'm not gonna read the list obviously, because it's really long. So...
I was gonna move, I was gonna move this and then if we could do the election...
We have to do the town election workers separate?
Yeah, I wanted to make a question about that, if Jackie's still here, which is... Yes. So on that, so just, can we do the...
Yeah, let's do the first ones without the town election workers. So do I have a move, a motion to approve this?
Second, noting that, as Paul noted earlier, these are all unpaid volunteers, each and every one of these.
And thank you so much for coming forward to the Disability Committee. We really need some fresh eyes and fresh perspectives on that committee.
Thanks, Jerry. Any other comments? Not, all those in favor?
So my question on the election workers is that, they're basically, basically all Democrats and all unenrolled, the six Republicans listed. And while I am not a Republican, but given the fact that we're heading into a presidential election and all of that, it seemed to me that it would make more sense to have a little more balance between the two parties. It looks like overwhelmingly, and maybe that's, that's the way that demographics are. But I'm just wondering if, if some thing can be done to add later. Everybody's on here, are great people, this isn't about this. But I wonder, we can add people. And I'm wondering if there's a way to add a few more Republicans so that they don't feel completely left out of the process?
We can, we can look for some, I know if we need to. And like you said, Carol and I can appoint people on Election Day if we have to. I believe that there is a specific date though, for this report to be appointed.
We have another meeting.
This is, this is before the presidential election, we'll be appointing next summer.
Yeah, we'll be appointing more people for 2012. But we do, we do have the primary, yeah. But for the state primary and for the presidential election, we will be appointing more people.
Jackie, do you have an idea, just, I have a feeling this is probably representative of our town population's demographics with Democrats versus unenrolled and Republicans. Do you have any idea of what the percentages are in our town?
I just did these numbers like yesterday and we have about 3,000 voters. We have probably, don't quote me exactly on this, but it's about 1,500 unenrolled. I think it's about 750 Democrats and maybe 600 registered Republic. It was something like that.
That's 50% unenrolled?
Yeah, it's about 50% unenrolled, yes.
It's just a strict point of interest. There's actually an article written about Sherborne a couple of years ago, how ranked number one in the entire state from swinging on, swinging parties between 2012 and 2016 in the presidential election.
All of that, I'm gonna support everybody that the town purpose put together. It's just that I'm asking, for the purposes of appearance, of fairness and so on, that a further effort be made to add a few more Republicans, just so that there's only six on the list that's two pages long.
We will try to reach out to more people. We would love more volunteers or we would love more people to get a list.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the list of town election workers?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
I was gonna go back though to the appointed boards. I wonder if in a later meeting, we should have a brief discussion about any positions that are open and maybe look at, actively try and help recruit. Because I think the council advisory needs to come up with a few people.
We, we used to do that in the past, just, I know we posted on the website, but just as...
It makes sense for our early September meeting to, let's go through the list. Maybe the September 12th meeting we can finish that.
Is there like a high part, like if it's ZBA or something?
Well, advisory is, I mean, that's really up to the town moderator.
Moderator, I know, but we may be able to reinforce it just by being aware. We can encourage people we know and having it be on television also gets the word out.
I agree with you, Jeff, it's been a primary function of Select Board members over the time that I've been on the board, is to actively go out and recruit.
Right.
I don't mean putting something on a website, but actually picking up the phone. I know at one point, I felt we needed more lawyers on more boards, so I actually made an effort to call lawyers in the town.
It seemed like it worked for a while, but we're working against you now.
More lawyers.
The point is that we can and we should reach out to people. And they respond differently. And they respond differently from something that might be published in the newspaper versus getting a phone call.
Right.
Saying, hey, there's a need for somebody with your skills.
Right, right. And we, having, everyone on this committee, I think, has had multiple roles before being on select board, so we have an understanding of what the skills are needed for a particular group, too.
Great. Okay, thank you. So let's move on to the routine business. Finance Director, do you have any, do you have a report?
We had audit work doing interim work. It went really well. They were pleased with the progress we made, and.
Microphone.
They were pleased with the progress we've made. They're coming out in December to do the final audit work. But other than that, I, well, I am, I am starting meetings in September related to quarterly billing. So we have Vadar coming out, and they're gonna do a demonstration. And I have pulled together, assembled a group from the, you know, from assessors and the collector's office, treasurer, finance. So we've got a good team, and David's involved, so getting ready to kick that off.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Town Administrator report.
Yep. The only thing I wanted to mention was we, we had the resignation or retirement of Karen Jewell from the COA. So since then, it was like being punched in the eye, and we just are putting things back together. And the COA doesn't actually meet until September. I've been working with the Chair to resolve some issues with the job description, and gets a couple of other things moving off the ground. And we expect to have that posted at MMA tomorrow, or will submit it tomorrow. And the consultant I'm working with came up with a timeline, and it's about a three-week posting. But we have it lined up that we would have the candidates and the screening done, and get to the finalists pretty much before the COA returns in September, and at that meeting, they could start.
So the Council on Aging actually does the hiring process for that position?
We do the process, they do the.
Right, I'm telling you, they're the ones who make the decision.
They do this for all.
Yeah, right, okay. Just a minute, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, that's true.
Right, exactly.
The one thing, though, I did talk to one of the board members, COA board members, which is that I didn't realize she also has a fair amount, I guess, either unused vacation time or disability time or whatever, that she's essentially not gonna be doing much more, even though her, is her last day is actually in October, isn't it?
The letter she submitted was a final date of October fourth.
Yeah, but I didn't understand that, whatever the period is, there's a number of weeks of accumulated time where she won't be working prior to that date also. I'm not sure when her last workday will be.
Yeah, we should talk, we should talk about.
It just reinforced, to me, the need for, for the timing, just because she's gonna be unavailable sooner, essentially unavailable, I believe, sooner than.
If I could, just as a point of order, we shouldn't talk about personnel matters in public.
Okay.
And some people take, they would like to get vacation paid in a check rather than work it out.
Right, no, I.
It's a variation.
It's a personality issue that shouldn't be discussed.
Okay.
So we shouldn't, we shouldn't talk about specific.
My apologies. But I think the timing is important of the search process.
Do you have more?
Oh, and then on the Sustainability Coordinator, that basically took a backseat to pushing stuff with the COA. So I didn't get the stuff into your packet, so what I'm gonna do is email you the draft job description plus an edited, or an altered job description of an existing employee. And then you can provide comments back to me, and we'll bring it back in your packet on the fifteenth.
And this would be a coordinator hired exclusively for Sherburne?
Not joint with Holliston.
Not joint with Holliston.
Right, but I did meet with Holliston, and we could, there still might be a chance of accessing some of that money, so.
It does. I want to make a comment on that. So the state budget passed with the fifty thousand in there. The fifty thousand is going to Holliston, but it is for someone who is going to provide services above Holliston in Sherburne. So it, it, because it's a benefit to the town, and because the money's there, and it's state funding, thinking that it's not a good idea to turn our back on that money, but to take as much of it as we can.
But wasn't it, didn't Holliston want to give us a percentage of population, so we would get?
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent, which, we'd rather have our own sustainability coordinator that works for Sherburne.
Right.
And if it happens to work out that they also work for Holliston, great, and use the money. But I think it's more important that, not just focus on the money side of it from the state, but that we get what we want in Sherburne, and not what, twenty-five percent of somebody's time that's focusing on Holliston.
But again, that's what Holliston has offered. That's not, that's not the final word.
I just kind of go back to my initial comments when we first started discussing this. I don't want to be the second, somebody's secondary job to, their primary job is Holliston.
Right. But that can be, what I'm saying is that can be renegotiated in several ways, with the help of maybe the governor, the governor's office, so that we might be able to actually get twenty-five percent of funding to support what we want to do, as opposed to twenty-five percent of a human being.
Right.
There's a variety of ways that we can try and work with Holliston.
We'd like fifty percent of the funding.
We're definitely going to work with Holliston, within the wording of what the earmark says, which is shared purposes, basically.
There's nothing in there about population. There's nothing in there about splitting it in terms of population. That's just Holliston being assertive for Holliston.
Right, right.
And if, if I was working for Holliston, I would try that ourselves. But we don't have to accept that. Frank, at the end of the day, there has to be some kind of agreement. Because if it's not reach agreement, there are other people who could be involved that would help drive an agreement.
But there are other ways of accomplishing the, the shared purposes and that wording than us both signing an intermunicipal agreement and hiring, you know, one person.
I'm gonna ask Debbie DeMar, Debbie, I know you wanted to say something, if you could just come up to the mic. Debbie was part of the group that.
Yeah, Debbie DeMar, Hollis Street. And Paul, you might know the answer to this, but according to Linsky's office, it has to be a shared position, the way the bill was written, and goes to Sherburne. And Linsky also said, or his, Kate in his office said that he and Dykma, Holliston's rep, were going to try and meet with the Board of Selectmen of both towns to see if we can come together to some agreement, because Holliston doesn't want to share. They didn't want a, you know, they've been dragging them along. So that's one thing. And I don't know if you guys have been approached by the representatives or not.
I've had some talks with Linsky, that's why I was saying.
But I don't think it's, it's a legal matter, that you cannot change the way the money's appropriated.
What I'm trying to say is that if the two administrators of Holliston and Sherburne can't work it out, that we have a resource in the two representatives who, in fact, put this thing together and got it through the House and the Senate, and which can be amended, by the way, by adding some amendment to some subsequent legislation. So there's always that threat there. But they're available as a resource if we can't work it out ourselves. That's, that's the point I was trying to make. That there are, there are other people outside the, the two town administrators who can help make a deal. So I was, I was just trying to encourage our town administrator not to simply take what Holliston is saying as, this is how it has to be. That's their proposal. Let's put it that way.
Their first negotiation.
It's, right, it's the first negotiation.
I also want to add. My point, my point is that what we've talked about here in our meetings, we want to come up with a job description for the Sustainability Coordinator that we want in Sherburne, despite what Holliston wants. We want to make sure we're getting exactly what we want.
And we submitted, we did a study with ten towns that had coordinators and gave, I mean, it was a huge list of the job description, but, you know, to pick and choose, but we gave, we turned it in to you, I think in May or whenever, to use as a guide. And I don't know where my cohorts are, but Fred Cunningham and his wife went to a regional mass energy coordinators symposium, and they did a lot of networking with sustainability coordinators. And, you know, there were people that were, might be interested in the job, however. They said for thirty thousand dollars, they could be an intern and get more money. So, I mean, that's just to let you know. And I don't know if the job description's gonna include benefits, or, you know, hours and all that stuff. And it sounds like it's not gonna be posted for a while.
I think the amount that was tossed around was thirty-eight thousand.
That was nineteen and a half hours, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was our original, yeah.
It wouldn't be a benefited position. That was what we tossed out.
I think you, the talk was that you wanted to start incrementally.
Right. And plus, they're gonna be hopefully bringing in four times that annually, so.
The appropriation's fifty?
Fifty to Sherburne. Originally it was eighty, and it was amended to fifty.
You said it was fifty to Sherburne and Holliston.
No, it's fifty to Sherburne.
No, Paul's saying what it actually came out at was fifty thousand in total.
Right, fifty thousand.
It's fifty to Holliston to be.
To be shared with Sherburne.
I think it's the other way around. I have the bill, but.
Holliston is supposed to be like the treasury, it goes into the Holliston treasury, but to be used for the two communities.
I think you got it a little reversed, but that's, you need to hear, we just have to get work together. Because otherwise, it's gonna be another year before, I mean, if we're gonna amend this bill, then it has to go through the Ways and Means for next fiscal year, right?
But that's actually a hope. In other words, if we get started and able to achieve a deal with Holliston.
In a perfect world, yeah.
This would cover year one, and then we go back for a year two and get additional funding for additional year. And, and my point is, I understand it's not everything that we want, but we also need to be sensitive to the taxpayers. And if there's fifty thousand out there, spread between the two communities, anything that we can get, even ten dollars, it's ten dollars more than.
And we're all for that, but, you know, we're just hoping that.
We just want to make sure we're doing what's best for Sherburne, not, not that the state's dictating to tell us to do.
I just wanted to say.
I don't want the state telling us how we're gonna handle our Sustainability Coordinator, or Holliston telling us how we're gonna handle our Sustainability Coordinator.
You mentioned that.
Decide on our own.
You mentioned that we were, or it sounded like you said that we were dragging Holliston, and.
Well, they've been dragged through this whole thing, because the selectmen were not for it from the day one, but the.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say. The timeline that I was shown from them, their expectation was it was going to be a much longer timeline than.
Right, they didn't want it, they wanted, they wanted an energy plan for the whole town before they hired a coordinator, which is what a coordinator would do. They spent fifteen grand to get some consultant to get their MVP, which is what a coordinator can do. I mean, don't get me started.
I'm not really sure what they're gonna do.
This is on TV, I have to be on my desk behaving.
I know.
But everybody knows me. So anyways, I, I think the consensus is, if, in not a perfect world, Holliston says, we can't do it this year, is the board willing to work on getting us something before the next year?
I think that's my point, is that we're telling David, write our job description for what we want for a Sustainability Coordinator. So despite what the state's telling us or what Holliston's telling us, we're moving forward with what Sherburne needs for a Sustainability Coordinator. And that's what we're working on.
And Paul makes a great point. We love the state funding. Town of Holliston is love the state funding. So it's in their interest and ours to come up with an agreement on how to split that state funding for what each town wants, but.
But in the meantime, we also are moving forward with.
Job description.
Yeah, with the job description, because I think that's the first point, that we need to see what Sherburne needs for this job before anything else.
And we supported, I mean, the select board actually voted to support it at town meeting. I think we supported it all along.
And so did Holliston.
We have that.
Our, our vote was not dependent on state funding.
Right.
Right. And neither was Holliston's.
Only thing I'd like to know from David is maybe if, do you mind emailing us or putting in next week's package for the language of the earmark? And the one question I have about the earmark is if Sherburne just walks away, does Holliston get all fifty grand, or they get?
They're big, they're over us.
I don't know the legality of this. I think it has to be shared, and it has to be used the way the bill was written.
Dave Linsky told me that he was, we've gotta show that it was shared in some way.
So we're willing to walk, we have a little bit of negotiation power past that twelve thousand, I think we're honest to have.
Part of the way this got sold to the legislature was that it was a regional program. Legislature's trying to encourage regional cooperation. So it is essential to have regional cooperation. But we can also use it to our advantage, because if, if we do set up something regionally, and Holliston doesn't want to go forward this year, that's, I'd be happy to, A, share the position with them, but use this year's money with the community that's ready to go forward, namely us, use all fifty.
Is that legally, though, if the amendment was written and I have it in my bag?
As long as we have that agreement with Holliston, how the money gets divided between the two communities. So if Holliston doesn't want to draw against the fifty, but as long as it's a regional thing.
So we can use our twenty-five.
We could use our hundred percent.
We could use the fifty if they're not ready.
Really?
Yeah.
And then the next year.
Is that really? I mean, it doesn't make sense if it's a bill that's from the Ways and Means and all that.
It's a very regional, yeah.
The earmarks are, I found them very flexible and useful.
Who?
I found the earmarks through the legislature have been very flexible.
Yeah, well, the whole, the way this all started is back in last September, our representatives, Holliston and Sherburne, got together, because we wanted it to be shared back in September. But then Holliston kept saying, no, 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 and then we decided we're on our own. And so we, we did our work separately for our town meeting, and they did their work separately. But we would love to share somebody, especially for the first year, because, I mean, hopefully they'll bring in four times that the first year.
I was told that their, their goal is to not use any town funds to start up.
But they've already spent fifteen thousand dollars on a consultant for MVP.
I don't think that they're figuring that in on the position.
Well, now they want somebody to create an energy plan for the town before the coordinator gets in.
Yeah, but they don't want, what I was told, is that they don't want to spend their money on a position.
So I think our goal is then for our September fifteenth meeting, which I think is our next, our September twelve, September twelve meeting, we're gonna have the job description ready to review.
Right, August fifteenth.
August fifteenth, I'm sorry, August fifteenth. Would we have, would we have it by August fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay. That we could go through the job description. And also, like you said, you'll send around the earmark legislation so we can look at it as well.
So what if Linsky and Dykma get the Board of Selectmen of both towns together to try and tame everybody?
We need to have the positions first.
Yeah, I think we need to, I would rather have our job description ready before we talk to anybody else, because I want to know, I want to decide what we want first, before we're told what we want.
I think it's also helpful in proving that we're ready to go.
Right.
They're still talking, we're ready to do something.
We've got a job description ready to go, and they're probably gonna come to the table saying they're still working on their energy plan, that's from what you say. Then it's gonna show, like, look, we're ready to go, and they're not, why do we have to wait for that?
Okay. I just want to make sure you guys are on board for getting this.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
We have been all on.
The clock is ticking, yeah.
Except for people from North Korea.
Right, thank you, Debbie.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just add one thing to this.
Yes.
That if, if, if Linsky and Dykma are not able to force an agreement, ultimately, none of the money gets spent without the governor. This is money, it goes to the executive branch, and the executive branch makes the decision whether the check is actually cut. So there is a final arbitrator on all of us, who will say to both of us, get your act together, or we're not gonna let you spend the money. So we've got a variety of levels. One is the town administrator to town administrator, and selectmen, select board to select board. Then we've got the next level of. Then we've got the next level of the reps for Holliston and Sherburne, and then we've got the ultimate authority with the state saying, get your act together if you want the money.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you on the 15th.
Alright. Selectmen reports, I know Chuck, you have something to add.
Yeah, well, that's kind of an overlap between the town administrator report and selectmen's report. The, Dave, are we now requiring that, um, uh, appointments to town committees have completed the OML training, that we take the July 11th session from KP Law, which is terrific. A number of people over there commented to me how helpful they thought that was. Is that now a requirement before they get appointed?
The intent, it's not a requirement, but we were looking at making it them sign that they've watched it.
So we're urging people to do it?
And ideally, it would be before it comes to you for consideration as appointment.
Okay, great, thanks. I just, it was up through me where there was...
So there, there was...
...suggestion or requirement.
Well, that, that's why I wanna have that, that, um, that floodgate to be able to say, you know, you do that and then we'll take your name.
Yeah.
Cause it's the only part, once they, once you appoint them, we can't say, huh? You can't go get sworn in.
Yeah.
You know?
Thanks.
Well, one thing though, I know from advisory, you, this wouldn't satisfy, you're required to also take the open meeting law course online.
The ethics.
Yeah, they do that.
That's the ethics training that you have to do.
Ethics training.
Yeah.
It's just different than open meeting law.
But includes open and meeting law.
It does include some special old meeting law.
You have to do that every two ye, I think every two years.
Yeah, that's the ethics training.
The town clerk collects, definitely collects that.
Do they do that for all committees? I knew advisory had to do it.
Yes, I think everybody.
Everybody does.
Any board, any board?
The, um, yeah, the town clerk, I think it's every two years she sends a reminder out that they have to re-up and take the training and turn the form in.
Right, right.
The thing is, is the hammer on it after if they don't do it.
Yeah.
And they're already on a board or a committee, we just need to know when it comes up re-appointment time.
Right, right.
So I have a comment.
Go ahead.
So a few days ago, we had a bad storm in town and I got all these, uh, updates from the town administrator, which I'm grateful, thank you. And I wanted to comment that by the time I got to the town, it seemed like things were cleaned up and, um, running. So I don't know, uh, whether it was your magic wand or whether the, uh, looks like the DPW really put in the effort. I know that the fire chief, as our emergency management director, was referenced in the communications from your office, has been very active.
And the police chief as well, but somebody else.
So all those people, I wanted to express my thanks and the thanks of people who have talked to me about it, all had nice things to say, that Sherburne seems to have recovered, where the other parts of the state where they're still without power.
Right.
And I guess our thanks also goes to Eversource, who was able to fix whatever needed to be fixed.
They responded very quickly.
So I wonder if you wanted to, just recount to us what, uh, the town went through, so you can properly get credit, everybody.
I mean, we've been kinda calling it a microburst. I don't know if it was actually technically that in, in, you know, weather.com or in the paper, but, um, it just blew into town very quickly, unexpected. Actually, the fire chief was in my office when it was, was going on. And, um, there was a very, a flood of calls and problems, just like there normally is when something like that hits. And, um, within, it was about an hour later, I think, um, Jeff had contacted me about, you know, did we need any help on phones or radios? And by that time, it was already died down, that, that we knew what issues hadn't, we knew what issues were out there that still needed to be addressed, like power on the farm road section and, um, and the calls had died down by then too. Once the sun came back out, I think that, um, people, uh, realized it was over.
I rose to my car today after I drove through a flooded road yesterday.
That was my own fault.
That was a false link, cause I don't have good drainage, so.
Yeah. Um, if I, if I had realized that, um, we would have that, we could have, um, Aaron in and Sean and the police chief to give a better synopsis of what went on than, um, than what I know of.
Oh, good work. Um, one other thing I wanted to mention for under selectmen reports, um, because it is the middle of August, next meeting we have August 15th, I wanna announce to the public that Pulte is going to be here to discuss the Coolidge Street development that Trask originally came forward with. I just wanna make it clear that we're having a meeting, so if people can come if they're interested in hearing an update on what's happening on Coolidge Street.
August 15th.
Uh, August 15th, yes. Any other selectmen reports? If not, I think we, the next item's the executive session, so under MGL, chapter 30A, section 21A, subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the chair so declares, library, chair does declare, the select board will